Order and it's great to be back with you all. And I guess at this point, Mr. Manager, we have a briefing.
Mr. Mayor, welcome back. At this time, our Plating Director, Bobby Tahan, will update council on the items that are on today's agenda and also on the February 18th agenda for the council meeting.
Hey Bobby, how you doing?
Good sir, how are you? Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As noted, I'll be providing the glimpse for you on today's items as well as the items on January 18th. The first item on today's agenda is by Virginia Beach Racquet Club North Associates. It's in the Lynn Haven District and in the future District Eight. This is located on Thomas Bishop Lane and the applicant is proposing to do a rezoning from R-20 and R-40 to R-40 as well as a subdivision variance to create three lots on the property. The property is currently utilized as or underutilized as tennis courts and they are proposing to subdivide the properties to create three residential lots. All the lots will meet the minimum lot with standards, however, Lot 1C, the one in purple farthest to the right, will not meet the minimum street line frontage on a public right-of-way, which necessitates the subdivision variance. There is no known opposition to this request and it was on the consent agenda for the Item number three is by Samet Properties LLC at 2097 Harper's Road in the Beach District and in the future District Five. This is a conditional rezoning from AG1 and AG2 to conditional I-1 Light Industrial District. If you remember, on September 7th, Samet Properties had requested a rezoning for the portion of the property to the south of this in order to create a bulk storage or have an industrial facility with bulk storage. As they've gone through the site plan review process, they had initially proposed to do underground storage for their site and they chose, as they've continued to value engineer the site, chose to go with above-ground wet ponds, wet detention on the site, which necessitates them to obtain these additional 10 acres for their onsite stormwater management, which is why they're back before you now for the rezoning. As noted, this is currently under review in the Development Services Center and is on its way towards the approval process pending this rezoning for this additional land for the stormwater management facility. Item number four is by Monet Freeman in the Rose Hall District and in the future District Number Three. This is for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor, but more specifically for microblading or permanent makeup. The proposal is to go into an existing salon or a new operation will be located in the Holland Plaza Shopping Center. There are no proposed changes to the building and there is sufficient parking onsite. This was on the consent agenda and there is no known opposition.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
And Mr. Tahan, this applies maybe to this application, but I think more broadly to the question about using this process for microblading. It seems that we have a pretty frequent amount of these and I wonder if you could just... Yeah, thank you. I see Marcus.
I like when Mark smiles like that.
Yeah, so, well, I guess, I mean, let me...
Something good's coming.
Frame it and maybe this is a conversation we can have in another format, but I guess I would wonder if you could share with me a little insight on why this is required and also, do we have any reason to have concerns about these? Why do they have to go through this process? Is it state requirement or is it our requirement? And I wonder, are we creating a burden on these business owners by having to go through this process when we really received no objection from the community? And so, maybe you could provide some insight. At least we haven't, to my knowledge.
As, I don't know, you want to handle it, Mark, or...
I'll be happy to start and you can fill in what I miss. I was smiling because you've taken over the mantle of Mr. Wood, who always used to raise the same question. Microblading and tattooing are the same physical process and so, it's difficult legally to distinguish one from the other. Really, what's different is the name, as we understand it. So, the same health and sanitary concerns that lead to regulation for tattoo parlors likewise lead to regulation for microblading.
Well, if I could ask a follow-up. Can a microblading facility, and I haven't seen the CUP here, but the application, but can, could they do tattoos there?
So, we have, staff has been applying a condition in the, that the applicants have agreed to that states that they are proposing to only do the application of permanent makeup or microblading and not do full tattooing at these locations. So, we have been imposing that condition on these, trying to show the difference for it. However, as Mr. Stiles noted, there is a, by the Code of Virginia, they fall under the same code section. Microblading and tattooing are essentially the same.
And then, the tattooing, is that, is it our requirement to, that there's a CUP process? Is the city's requirement? And that's based on the, some of the historical concerns that have existed around tattoo parlors with proximity to all kinds of other businesses and neighborhoods and things? And maybe that's based on prejudices that no longer exist or maybe that still do exist. And I'm not trying to open that whole can, but it doesn't make sense to me that these businesses have to come and spend money and go through this whole process and we just approve them all the time. Doesn't seem fair to them.
I believe, fair enough for the, I'll say for the Commonwealth of Virginia, when the prohibition on tattoo parlors that was previously allowed and was struck down was then, it was the choice to ease into it in order to assure that there were proper regulations. That was what happened regionally. If it is the will of council, that is a possibility to look at it in a different way and not requiring a conditional use permit, but potentially having performance standards and locational requirements that could meet that criteria. But that is a larger discussion, I believe, sir.
It is a larger discussion, but maybe it's one we should have and maybe it's one we should have not now, but another time. Because I'd be interested in, have we denied a CUP for a tattoo parlor or microblading in any time recently? And on what basis? And have there been any community concerns? Because the tattoo, I don't, and the tattoo parlors I'm familiar with are, most of them are luxury places. They're like high-end salons and I'm not hearing of any problems, so I'm not suggesting there aren't any, but it's something maybe we could think about.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
So, Mr. Bellucci brings up a really good point. I mean, when we first enacted this thing with tattoo parlors, they were very new and we had a lot of concerns and we put a lot of things in place, like they had to be so far away from a school, they had to be down to resort. So, could we keep those same criteria in place, but just not require a CUP?
Currently, right now, again, it's in specific zoning districts that require a conditional use permit, so we, it is the will of council. If the council chooses to do that, we would just need to make sure that we spell out what those parameters are and there would have to be a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so we'd have to go through that process.
Okay, well, if you could spell it out and send out to everyone that and we can put it under consideration.
And Mr. Bellucci, I remember a number of years ago when Glenn Davis was the Rose Hall Representative. It seemed like every week we had a tattoo parlor in the Rose Hall District coming up, so...
And we haven't had any problems.
Yeah, I know.
I'm aware of.
But I'll tell you what, I think, you know, the goal to make everything as user-friendly as possible is something that, you know, that we should be striving for. So, I really thank you for bringing it up, okay? Anybody else?
All right. Item number five is by Platinum Management LLC at 5429 Greenwich Road and it is in the Kimpsville District and in the future District Number Four. This request is in the Newtown SGA and is a request to rezone the property to A-36 from I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District to conditional A-36 Apartment District. The applicant is proposing to construct three multifamily buildings with 315 units on the 10.73 acres of the property. They are, traffic engineering has noted that there is no need for a current traffic signal warrant analysis for the property due to the current improvements that have been made on Greenwich Road. However, through the site plan review process, they have noted and the applicant has concurred that they will provide a review of those traffic counts for this proposed development and to determine if a traffic signal bond is necessary to provide their portion of a traffic signal, if it is necessary in the future. While the vision of this portion of the Newtown SGA plan indicates office uses, north of this site is the Topgolf Facility as well as a, to the east of this site is a multifamily development that was approved by City Council to A-36. This specific site in the Newtown SGA does not have a designated future land use on it and therefore, the potential for any type of use would be based on whatever the current market would be. There is no, again, as noted in the plan, there's essentially a hole here that doesn't say office or future, any other future land use. However, as noted, to the north, this is a Topgolf Outdoor Recreational Facility as well as a rezoned portion of property that went to A-36 that's immediately to the east.
Yeah, Mr. Moss.
I don't need this question answered now because I think this will be a discussion item under the formal agenda, but so you can be thinking about it. We have a long-term strategy that goes back as far as 1986, no one will remember that, of diversifying the tax base and one of the things we have a scarcity of is industrial and commercial property. And we've talked about that and so, I'm curious, and obviously, the current market gives a preference on return on investment to these kind of developments because credit is easy to get without having to have secured tenants and everything in advance, but there's an opportunity cost in terms of future things that bring jobs. And so, I'd just be curious how this assessment was integrated with our economic development strategy of diversification and even absent a specific use, what made us conclude that the opportunity cost of changing the zoning relative to future opportunities was worth the trade-off to make this recommendation? That's my question, but I want to give you time to think about it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Henley.
Well, I've sort of got a lot of comments and I'll try to sprinkle them around on different topics, but this one, this one is a major, major, major project and we have no background on it. And to me, the write-up is not very complete either. It doesn't tell us how many bedrooms are in each apartment. It doesn't give us that breakdown and if this is the only, it says one of the conditions is that, you know, it's been presented to us what the site plan is. I can't tell anything from this. I certainly don't see 315 parking spaces on here, but this is, this is, this is heavy and I know from that development, I just remember a few years ago when we had an apartment complex in that area that the district council member caught a whole lot of flak from the people across the way and we haven't heard anything from the neighbors. It makes me think that people don't know about this. You know, we don't have a lot of newspaper articles about what's going on in Virginia Beach anymore and I just wonder if the people in that area are aware of it. But in looking at this, the lack of information here, the lack of discussion from the Planning Commission, I called Mr. Holcomb earlier today, I should have called earlier, but I don't have enough that I'm going to vote for this today. I'm not saying I wouldn't be convinced, but there's just not enough here. But it also brings the question of, you know, we're getting this preview the very day we're going to vote on it. We're not getting the information early enough. In times past, we used to get everything that went to the Planning Commission, including the transcripts, by the last week of the month and that gave us plenty of time to visit the properties, to get all the information we wanted to get. We're just not getting enough time to really look, I mean, if it's a routine thing, yeah, it's okay, but something big like this, I've got a lot of questions about and before I would vote to put 315 apartments on 10 acres, I've got to know a whole lot about it. And I just, there was a time and yesterday certainly wasn't a very good day to ride around and look at the properties either and we're not getting this information early enough and this one is nowhere complete enough.
Okay, Rocky.
Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Ms. Henley calling me this morning and I have been out on this property and I challenge anybody, if you hadn't been out to Greenwich Road lately, it's not the same old Greenwich Road. I mean, it is a, the amount of growth out there and the way the road is situated now with, I don't know, it's like four left-hand turns to make a right-hand turn, it seems like. So, it is not the same Greenwich Road that we're used to and I think this housing is placed in a good location to the interstate and could be a good intermediate between Norfolk, Virginia Beach and getting to the interstate and providing some housing. But I do understand what Ms. Henley's saying. It is a rather large project, but the Greenwich Road area is, it doesn't look like it once looked. They've done a lot of work over the past four or five years and it's really changed.
Anybody else at this point?
Item number six is by Trionna Mills at 1017 Kimpsville Road in the Kimpsville District and in future District Number One. This is a request, a conditional use permit request for a tattoo parlor and again, more specifically for microblading or permanent makeup. It is going into an existing salon at the Providence Road Shopping Center and, which has sufficient parking and no changes to the building are proposed. This was on the Planning Commission consent agenda and there was no known opposition. Item number seven is by Kevin and Keisha Mercer at 5300 Kimps River Drive, Suite 126 in the Kimpsville District and in future District Number One. This is a conditional use permit for an assembly use and a 1,000-square-foot unit in the Kimps Corner Shopping Center along Kimps River Drive at the corner of Kimps River Drive and Kimpsville Road. They plan to hold events, which include retirement parties, baby and wedding showers and other celebrations. They are proposed, the proposing hours are between 10:00 AM and 2:00 AM, but most of the events will be in the evenings and off-peak hours with the existing shopping center uses. All required parking can be accommodated onsite and there is a condition listed in here that prohibits outdoor music and speakers. Staff did receive one letter of opposition from a neighbor to the north of the site noting concerns regarding parking and noise. The Planning Commission placed this on their consent agenda and there were no speakers at the hearing and the recommended conditions were satisfactory to the Planning Commission and to the applicant. Item number eight is by Jody Calcagno and at 4752 Euclid Road in the Bayside District and in future District Number Four. This is a conditional use permit for an assembly use. Staff recommends approval and the Planning Commission recommends approval on a 10 to zero vote. The venue is described by the applicant as a boutique event venue for business retreats and bridal and baby showers. The event space is limited in this building to 3,400 square feet on the first floor as the second floor remains an office space. 34 parking spaces are required for the use and 38 spaces are onsite and is, again, at this, with the use being off-peak hours with the office use, there are sufficient parking spaces on the site. This was on the consent agenda and there was no known opposition.
Yes, Mr. Moss and then Ms. Henley.
It's unusual. We've got two of these on the same agenda and it's first, this is the first thing we've seen, first time we've seen these of people now wanting to have baby showers and birthday parties in strip shopping centers. What are the criteria we are, we are requiring to make certain that these are going to be compatible with the other uses in those areas?
As far as the shopping center uses, the key for these, these two applications is the fact that they are off-peak time with the existing office uses. This is off of Euclid Road, which is, this stretch of Euclid Road is more commercial along it. There is some residential exposure at the rear, but it is an existing office building. We do have noted conditions similar to the other one that no outdoor music or other things to help protect the neighborhood.
I'd like to see what policy is being used to determine your recommendations.
Okay, Ms. Moss.
Well, my question is, on the other application in Kimpsville, there wasn't any amplification of music or for speakers at all at any time, if I remember correctly, and we just saw that slide. Here, there's a timeframe in which it is allowed. There is Pocahontas Village, which is right back behind there, so I'm having a hard time understanding how you decided for one shopping center that, that no outside amplification of speakers or music was allowed? And here's another place that also backs up to a neighborhood. I realize you've got the interstate, but there's still a neighborhood behind there and yet it's allowed here. So, I'm back with Mrs. Henley. I'm having a hard time understanding why one set of neighborhoods would get one set of consideration and here we come to another situation and we've got a different standard. And so, absent a good explanation at a later date, at tonight, when we come up with it, it's hard for me to understand the difference of why one gets considered and one has to put up, has to, not put up with, but has to incur the experience of the noise. Maybe the highway drowns it all out and they can't even hear that from the highway, but it's not, there's not a consistency, so it's hard for us to understand what is the policy, what's the criteria by which we know we're being equitable to all neighborhoods.
Mr. Jones.
Well, I didn't see any information indicating opposition or anything.
That is correct. It was on the consent agenda and there was no opposition.
No opposition.
Correct.
Ms. Henley.
Was there any attempt to make sure all of the other uses in those buildings are aware? I guess the orange sign is up there, but does that mean that they, they are aware of what's going to be coming?
The staff did not reach out to those other users. We do, as noted, the disclosure statement requires the property owner to sign off on this. There is no...
Property owners would be the owners, property owners are joining the shopping center, not the users within the shopping center. How do you do that?
I, to be honest, I don't believe we do notify the internal, the internal people to the shopping center because it's, it has a sign-off by the, by the owner of the property or the representative.
I kind of think we need to be alerting the internal users because there's going to be a difference. Anyway, I mean, that might be up to the, of course, if they've all got a lease and so forth, that might not make any difference to them, but introducing a whole new use is, is something that we're doing here and I think we need to be careful with how we do it.
Excuse me, is that, excuse me? That's behind Vespa or that's on?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Well, it's really on the opposite side of Vespa on that roadway and Pocahontas Village's residences are behind that and I know they probably don't have an active civic league, but neighborhoods shouldn't have to complain for us to be equitable in how their property's treated. That was my point.
Okay, anybody else at this point?
Item number nine is by Michael D. Siphon Incorporated at the southwest corner of Providence Road and College Park Boulevard in the Centerville District and in future District Number Seven. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a indoor climate-controlled self-storage The proposed building is four stories and 45-foot tall, located at the southwest corner of the property. There is a request for the deviation in height from the maximum required 45 to 47 and a half feet as well as fencing and landscaping that will be enclosing the facility. These deviations are recommended for approval as the extra height does provide architectural features that will help screen the roof equipment that are proposed on the building. To the west is an existing four-story medical office and the structure is proposed 130 feet from the, from the closest apartment building, which are the Jamestown Apartments, who submitted a letter of support for the proposal. The application was on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission and there's no Item number 10 is the resolution to amend the City of Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan to address citywide stormwater impacts for discretionary land use applications. This was deferred from the City Council meeting on December 7th. And this Comprehensive Plan is a result of the resolution that was approved by City Council in September and pending the approval of the bond referendum, which was approved by the citizens of Virginia Beach. This proposal would require rezonings, all rezonings in the city to provide a preliminary stormwater analysis, no longer limiting it to the southern watershed of the city. Staff has proposed an opportunity for a different type of analysis if a condition or a proffer is provided by the applicant, noting that they will show no impact to the existing stormwater system. If they provide that type of proffered condition, it would allow them to do a more simplified analysis on the property to show that their, the flow rate or how much water's coming off the property meets the exact same flow rate as it does now, as long as they provide that proffer. While the Planning Commission was supportive of the idea, they did vote 11 to zero to deny the resolution as they believe that there is additional input required of the stakeholders.
Okay, Ms. Moss.
Just want to mention that Mr. Jones and I have both agreed and I think there's a memo on the thing that we would defer this till March 1st to give, I think, to get, no, was it February 1st? Excuse me, February 1st to give time for all the additional comments to come in and be adjudicated and we expressed our concurrence, thanked Mr. Tahan for working that, but I think that was in the memo that you all got in your package that would be voted on on February the 1st.
Yeah, I think that's approved in action at this point. You know, certainly stakeholder input is, you know, very important, okay?
And I had a long conversation with Tuck Bowie today to make sure that he was aware of that.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Good question. Is the Comprehensive Plan, another Comprehensive Plan redo getting ready to occur and what's the timeframe for that?
Currently, the timeframe is, we're restarting the Comprehensive Plan Public Outreach and we plan to start again hopefully in the next couple of months with a small area redo as well as a much larger outreach starting in March, April. But yeah, so we do plan on in approximately a year and a half to bring forward a Comprehensive Plan update by the Planning Commission.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, Ms. Wolfman.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Tahan. I wanted to see if you could provide me some information. Received some concerns about, concerns about an undue burden on local businesses, small businesses in terms of this particular resolution, how the process may create a barrier for them, an undue financial issue for them because it is changing. If you can provide me some information on how, you know, these businesses are affected by this resolution financially, I certainly would appreciate that. Before the February 1st date so that I can kind of review that and see, kind of address those concerns.
Okay, anyone else at this point?
The next items I will go over are for the January 18th agenda. This first item is by Hunt Club Condominium Associates, Inc. I will note that for disclosure, I am currently the Chairman of the Board of the Religious Institution directly to the east, so therefore, I'm not providing, nor have I provided any information or direction to staff on this item. If council has any questions on this item, please direct them to me. I will not be providing this presentation right now. Item number two is by Princess Anne Village LLC at Princess Anne, it's at Princess Anne Road and North Landing Road and currently in the Princess Anne District and future District Number Two. The proposal is to do a conditional rezoning from B-2 Community Business District, AG1 and two Agricultural Districts, to PDH-2 Plan Unit Development and the R-10 Residential District as well as a conditional B-2 Business District on the property. Staff does recommend approval with the Planning Commission voting eight to one, with one abstention to recommend approval of this item. The application is to rezone 55 acres in the historic Princess Anne Center at the intersection of Princess Anne and North Landing Roads. The property is within the transition area, the Courthouse Historic and Cultural District and SubArea Two of the 65 to 75 noise zone. The applicant is proposing a neo-traditional style community of 89 units, 73 units of which are single-family, while 16 are garage apartments and one commercially used own parcel for a restaurant.
Ms. Henley?
Let him finish.
Oh, sorry. Of the 55.57 acres, 36.27 acres can be counted towards the resulting density of 2.44 units per acre. 50% of, 50% open space is required and the applicant is proposing to provide 56% open space as well as including a portion of property that will be land swapped with the city, which requires a City Council action and the council was briefed on previously. The historical review... The Historical Review Board issued a certificate of appropriateness for each of the house designs that are proposed for these lots. The joint review process with the Navy also reviewed this proposal and is consistent with the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan regarding density and the use. The TA, ITA, CAC informed staff after the Planning Commission meeting that the latest layout was not presented to them by the applicant for their review, and the committee has concern with the proposed density as it is, as it is higher than the one acre recommended in the, in the transition area guidelines. Two letters of opposition were received, and that noted concerns related to flooding density and removal of natural vegetation. The applicant did provide a preliminary stormwater analysis, and during that process it was noted that there was modeled flooding of the property taking on public water. The applicant plans, or has proposed to the city to cost participate, to handle this modeled water of the city's, taking on the city's water, and properly routing it through the site. That does require future council approval and is not part of this rezoning request at this time. A left turn lane is proposed into the site, and an intersection, intersection analysis required, will be required to determine ultimate alignment during the site plan review process. And again, the Planning Commission does recommend approval with a vote to eight to one, with one abstention.
Okay. Ms. Henley?
I do have some comments about this one. I wouldn't be surprised if this doesn't set a record for the longest in process of any application we've ever had. I know it's, I think it's been at least five years, maybe longer, and I hope it's finally there, and I hope this doesn't send a message to the folks who are concerned about the stormwater requirements, that this is the way it's going to be for all of them. It's just that this has been an extremely unusual development. At one point, four years ago, they actually hired the premier planning firm in the country on urban planning, the Duane Firm, to come and do charrettes, and they were just so off the wall, they started all over again. They have really worked on this property for, like I say, at least five years, maybe longer. And I want this weekend to get at least what the Planning Commission got, the write-up. I know it's got to be extensive, and I, I would really suggest that everybody get it early, because we can't get it on Friday night and vote on it the next Tuesday. This is going to be coming at our next voting meeting, and really have a chance to digest all of this, because this, I think, is going to be, well, it's, it's a very visible site. It's a very important site, and, and I think it comes in like five overlay areas, what they have had to do, I hope nobody else ever runs into, because it's really been arduous for them, and it's, it's been a problem for the developer, but also for the families that are involved in having to, to do this to settle estates. It's really been quite drawn out, but necessarily, because it had so much to deal with. And so I think it's important that we get this data, I, I would like to get it in Friday's packet as much as you can. Maybe you don't have the staff, final staff write-up yet, but at least we can get what the Planning Commission had, because it's important that we understand this for a lot of reasons. But this property, not only is it very critical here with the municipal center, and, and very visible, of course, this used to be the Kellerman Eaton property, for those of you who remember, for at least a hundred years, maybe more, it was a Kellerman Eaton lumberyard, store, plumbing, heating, whatever. So this is not a totally new development, this is a redevelopment, and they did think that they were going to be something else, maybe about ten years ago, and so they closed the Kellerman Eaton part of it, got a rezoning for a, I think, a CVS pharmacy, but all that fell through. And so it's been, it's been a lot of, of effort, and anytime there's change, it's, you know, it's difficult for us. But this property also is very critical as far as all of the stormwater issues, and they have had to, and, and of course, they're in the southern watershed, so even without this new requirement we've got, they had to provide the interim or the initial findings that they would be meeting the, the requirements. And it has been a lot to deal with, because they found out in the process, of course, they were, Holland Road Water was coming down through here, and then Princess Anne Road Water is coming down through here, all of it to get to the West Net Creek. And so they have, they have been the, the guinea pigs, I guess, for a lot of our modeling and a lot of our, how we were going to deal with it, and that's why I think it's really important that we and the public and everybody understand. Like I say, I certainly hope this doesn't give all of our developers the idea that they're going to have to take five years to solve all this, but I think we can learn a lot from this, and I'm sure that our engineers have learned a lot in trying to implement all of this, to make sure we're not making issues for downstream or upstream, because remember, the West Net Creek is impacted by wind tides, and so, you know, they had that additional kind of thing thrown in there. So I really think this is a, a major case study for us, and I, I hope we'll look at it from a learning standpoint, and, but, you know, in talking about how long ago, they went to the Historic Review Board in July of 2018. It's been that long ago. And so when you look at this, and like I say, I hope you'll, we'll, we can get this early on so we can really understand what, what all is involved here, and, and I, I think this also sends a message that what we said in that Comprehensive Plan statement doesn't mean there's not going to be any development, but it means that the development is going to have to meet these new standards, and they are tough, and we're not going to do things that are going to cause all of this work that we're going to be doing for stormwater to be for naught. It's going to conform, and they ran these models many a time in order to get it to the point where our engineers were satisfied. So I hope we can, can learn a lot from this development, and, and I just, to the families and to the developers and to the community and the neighborhoods and all, I know it's been a long time, but, you know, I think we finally have something to look at, so...
Okay. Mr. Moss?
And in that staff analysis, since obviously one of the concerns has been, you know, and the comp plan is just a guide, not a policy, policy, but we are more than double what the guide says on density. So I think we need to be able to address why this is not precedent-setting.
Yeah.
That's key, just so we can talk to the people in the larger community who are concerned about that, because I think we need to put their mind at ease about why this isn't a precedent that we're setting for the whole entire transition area.
Well, it's not, well, that will be, I think it's probably in the staff report, because see, this is, this is in an area that also, it sort of overlaps the lower transition area and the ITA. I think this is more considered in the ITA, and if you look at the ITA plan, the Interfacility Traffic Area Plan, and they're having to resolve the issue with the Navy, they had to meet all of those standards, and that's, I'm sure is all in the, in the staff report. That's why I want everybody to have it in plenty of time. But with the ITA, of course, because the Navy didn't want, doesn't want any residential in the flyway that's going to be complaining about the noise, they did identify the area, particularly right around the municipal center, where the, the noise levels are not quite as high, and so they do allow a little more density in this area, and that, I think, is the, is the difference, because we also see that when we're looking at North Landing Road, and we do have some others that are coming up and others that we have, have approved on North Landing Road. So we're, this is sort of an overlap piece of property. Is it, is it to the south or is it to the north? It's, it's kind of in the middle and it overlaps, but I think there's very good explanations that we need to make sure everyone understands that, you know, this is, I think we called it the bull's eye, where additional density is allowed, because in most of the ITA, there's zero residential.
Correct.
So this is, this is an overlap, and that's why there's so many components to this piece of property that, you know, there's a lot to, to look at, and I, I hope everybody will take the time to ask all your questions, because I think this is a great case study, and, and I, I really appreciate the, the willingness of the developer to have worked through all of this. It's been arduous, and the families, they've had a tough time, because they are settling estates. I think there are three family estates that have been involved in this, and five years is a long time.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Henley. And I, you know, and I do concur that, you know, once again, this was a long process, but if we use it as a template going forward, I think it might be applicable to a lot of things. But one of the shortcomings we have in the city right now is available housing for, you know, a lot of folks, especially affordable housing. But, you know, as we, if we do it smart and do it right, and, you know, I think, you know, this is going to be a great project. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now we move on to the short-term rental portion of this agenda. Item number three is by James D. White Revocable Living Trust at four oh seven Eighteenth Street, Unit A, in the Beach District and future District Number Six. This item was deferred in the December City Council due to a advertising error. There was a issue with the unit that was advertised for this particular unit. Because of that, it is being, that was corrected and will be heard on January eighteenth. The applicant is requesting to operate a short-term rental for three bedrooms at this site. The site is located in the Vibe Creative District. Three parking spaces are required, and only one of the spaces for this property can be counted towards the garage, although it is a two-car garage. That was part of the regulations that were passed by City Council for the short-term rentals. Because of that, the applicant is, has obtained two off-street parking spaces at three thirty-five Virginia Beach Boulevard, which is a little more than five hundred feet from the site, to supplement the, the existing one parking space on the site. No parking can be technically located on the driveway, because they do share that driveway with Unit D, which was previously approved for a short-term rental by City Council. There is no known opposition, and this was on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission. Items number four through nine are by twenty-five oh eight Pacific Avenue LLC in the Beach District and future District Number Six. The proposal is for six short-term rental units that will be in each of, each of the recently constructed three-bedroom townhouse-style dwellings. Each unit is owned by the, by the applicant. Eighteen parking spaces are required, and ten can be accommodated on-site, and the applicant is proposing to obtain eight parking spaces off-site at the Twenty-Fifth Street Parking Garage. Again, same thing noted here for this, the, the garages in the rear of the townhouses can only count for one parking space as required through the recently adopted zoning ordinance amendments for short-term rentals.
Mrs. Henley?
You probably will have it in the write-up. When was this building built?
I don't have that right in front of me. I'll make sure it's in the write-up.
I'm really concerned that some buildings are being built as short-term rentals, and, you know, that's kind of a way to get around what's required if you're really doing transient house, transient units, and it's kind of strange looking.
It's very new.
Yeah, and if I could add something to that?
Yep, Mr. Bluechuk.
And I think it's germane to some of the conversations that happened around short-term rentals previously, and maybe discussions we're going to have in the future, but we talk about affordable housing as one of the top identified issues in the city, and what we, I mean, there's some questions I'd like to know, and, and I guess we, it may not be proper to know, since it's in the LLC, but is the, is the owner of these units the developer, the builder of the building? Do you know?
I do not know of answer.
Because I'd be interested to know if that, if someone acquired six units in one building for the express purpose of operating short-term rentals, and think of the impact that has and would have if, if this council had allowed that to be extrapolated all over the city on, on the long-term rental market for working people. And so I think in that regard, the council made a good decision in limiting that to the OR District, because we would see more and more of this, and even in the OR District, this has an effect on the rental market, long-term rental market, working, workforce housing, and military families. So I just want to make that point.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Moss?
Just to pick up on Mr. Bluechuk's comment, it was true on the West Coast, anyone who looked at the LA, San Diego, some of those coastal areas, Santa Barbara, short-term rental, there really is empirical evidence, really took out, made a substantial reduction in what was previously what you call workforce rental markets, long-term, and they just dissipated. Not that they didn't have housing problems already, but this gets back to, you know, always the competition of private property rights and the impact, and are you creating a new property right? Well, then I think we're right, like we did, we acted smartly, because we didn't have an instituted property right to short-term rentals, we weren't taking something away. But it does show that if you, if you are careful, you, you compound a problem that's already difficult to solve, so your comments are spot on.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Power?
Just for clarification, I'd point out that this space was previously a small office building, as I recall, and I'm not sure when it was acquired, but it was probably at the, near the outset of the short-term rental issue. I'm guessing it was acquired since I've been on council anyways, maybe 2019, 2020, but that's a guess. And just, obviously, this, while the impacts that council members have previously said are true, this particular development, I think, does fulfill a need for, and a demand for short-term rental, which is for our visitors to our area who come here and spend a lot of money, where this is in the oceanfront resort area. It is certainly an appropriate place to have a short-term rental, and I believe it'll be successful, and adds, adds to the richness, if you will, of the available housing to people who want to visit our area and stay here. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Bobby?
Item number ten is by ORP Ventures LLC at six oh three Twentieth Street. This is a request for a three-bedroom short-term rental along Twentieth Street at the oceanfront. Again, this is a three-bedroom, single-family home. Three parking spaces are required and can be accommodated on-site, and one letter of support was received from an adjacent property owner. There is no known opposition to this request.
I think, yeah, I just think it would be important when people see these, because they think we've taken action on short-term rental, but we did pass a ordinance that talked about that this was conditional use, but it's, so that people remember that we made, because hotels were allowed in that area to start with. Sometimes people just see that, they don't remember that really hotels were in a, a by right use in those areas, but we retain conditionally used to have some control over parking, but we really aren't going back on our commitment of how we acted on short-term rentals. And that slide, if people just read that, they might not remember, and I know, Mr., that's what Councilmember Power was trying to allude to, but that would be an important little footnote or something, so that people understand that we really aren't changing where we have been. We're just acknowledging that we wanted to exercise a little bit more control over that, since it wasn't actually a hotel. That would, might be nice to remind the public of that.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving along.
Items number eleven through nineteen are on Nineteenth Street in the Beach District and future District Number Six. These are for individual, individual short-term rental units in each of the units. These are all nine, nine units with one bedroom each, all owned by the applicant. The applicant is proposing to convert this to a short-term rental. Eleven, nine parking spaces are required, and eleven parking spaces are available to the occupants, and have been in this fashion since the building was constructed in the nineteen seventies. There is one letter of support that was submitted by a nearby property owner for this proposed short-term rental. The Planning Commission voted nine to zero with two abstentions to recommend approval. That, I am done with the guns.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Nice job. Thank you.
Okay. Good stuff, Bobby. Appreciate it. Okay. Any council liaison reports at this point in time? Okay, John?
This is just bikes, trailways, and trails and waterways. You probably saw a lot of newspaper, and I think there was even a couple television discussions. discussions about the Newtown Road thing. As I, you know, I mentioned that earlier, I think in December, our first meeting in December, that there was, when we didn't get the federal grant, that the committee would be asking us to consider, as part of the budget process, $5 million of seed money so they would have money appropriated to better support and go after grant funding. But the, the committee and the committee chairman are well aware that we have a lot of competing priorities, and so, but, but that was a surprise to us and to them when the auto came outside, and we didn't know that was coming, so they wanted to be sure that you knew that they, they weren't aware of the surprise either because they like to be very much upfront that something's coming. They are obviously very strong advocates for trails, but they understand we have a lot of competing interest, and I want to make sure that you were aware of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Bullucci.
Well, I do, I have a few that I'd like to share. One, just to build upon Councilmember Moss's comments about bikes and trailways, we had a group meeting about, with some folks from the BMX community, that was a follow-up to a previous discussion we had. And I think one of the outcomes of the application that came from Centerra Way was the awareness of a BMX community in Virginia Beach that's thriving, and that's really in need of a place to enjoy the sport, to share the sport with the public, wider public. And so we had a really great meeting, and I just want to thank the Parks and Rec team and members of the community who are interested in this, folks from the Parks and Rec Commission, Bikes and Trailways, Parks and Rec Foundation, a lot of really wonderful people came to the table. And we have a lot of work to do, but I just want to keep this council in, in copy, so to speak, on the progress we're making on this effort because I do think that the BMX community is one that's deserving of a place to enjoy their sport and support from the council. And I believe the council would like to, and the public would like to, give them that opportunity. So I look forward to keeping you in, up to date on the discussions we're having and to continue that conversation. I also want to share with you that the Human Services Department had another really successful food distribution in December, and I think that they should be commended for their continued efforts to serve people in our community. I wasn't able to make this particular one in person, but I really want to just share my gratitude and appreciation for everyone in Human Services who was, was involved with that effort. It's a really Herculean task to get this food, lots of nonprofits involved, the Food Bank, and they have this amazing system at the convent, at the amphitheater where they utilize the parking lot. And the people who come up and receive food are in need of that nourishment and really appreciative of it. So a lot of people went to work hard on that, and I think we should be very grateful for that. The Human Rights Commission, I want to share, is continuing to expressly monitor what's happening with COVID, and with a focus on how COVID is, continues to impact minority communities, people of color, and underserved constituencies. And I get a report from them from time to time about they're tracking this data through the Department of Health, and with a real focus on what's happening in Virginia Beach. So I really want to share that with the council, that they're doing that great work, and please feel free to let me know if you ever want to see that information. I'm sure they'd be glad to share it with you. And then finally, I attended my first meeting of the Arts and Humanities Commission. I'm one of the new liaisons there, and they've got a really great team there that's got a lot of really promising opportunities on, on the horizon. But one thing that came up in the conversation that I think is relevant to our work here, especially as we enter budget season, is, is that they haven't seen an increase in the budget for the Arts and Humanities Commission, what they distributed in about 10 years, I think, and of course, with inflation and, and a really enhanced need for programming and cultural programming in our city. I think, I hope that the council will look at their budget as we move into this cycle with an eye toward expanding opportunity for more people to enjoy cultural experiences in our city. I'm not talking about a major increase. I think their request is going to be coming at very modest, but, you know, they have to turn down a lot of great programming. And when we consider their requests and what they fund with a lot of the programming that we fund as a city through cultural affairs and other things, to do the same thing that community organizations and arts organizations are already doing, it could be a really great synergy that I think probably wouldn't end up costing anything or be very, very net, very low-net increase. So anyway, thanks for your patience, but I, I've, I've had a lot of great meetings with these groups, and I just want to share what they're working on.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else that just, Mr. Raff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to have you back as well.
Thank you.
Are we, this is council comments, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council comments or liaison?
Liaison or, you know, but we're morphing into discussion, so we're okay.
Thank you. I had a good conversation with Gary Ryan, the executive director of Moca, and obviously she let me know that the work that, I believe, some of our council members have already spoken with her, and what she's trying to do is rehabilitate the Moca museum, being that it's, it's of age, it leaks, it has, it needs a lot of repair to it as well. And I was having this conversation with her, and I'm going, well, Moca is kind of, you know, off the beaten pathway, and I think we can do a lot better if we founded a, a new home. And it's something that they're, that she's open to as well. So I had this idea, if we could look at moving Moca to where our visitor center is, and on, on visitor center, and when you come off of 264, I think it's an underutilized visitor center as well, and I think it would bring Moca somewhat out of the shadows and be the welcoming piece to the Vibe District. I think Moca provides our community really extraordinary opportunities for the culture, for the arts as well. And I've asked the city manager to see what would that process be like if we could relocate Moca to where the visitor center is. I know we, we own the visitor center as well, we own that piece of land, but I think it's a conversation we could have. And if Moca, obviously, if they're open to it, which I understand they are open to moving to a location where they can host bigger exhibits, they can make sure all the artwork is safe as well, I would like council support on that, and I'm open to all the help that we can do to really make sure Moca has a home here in Virginia Beach and is, and is celebrating at the forefront of our city as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very good suggestion. Anybody else? Okay, we're, Ms. Woodman and then Ms. Wilson.
I think that's Ms. Wilson's hand. She's Vice Mayor. Would you like to?
Oh, thank you. I'd just like to say that the visitor center is very underutilized, and it's at our front door, so that's something, we need something very special there, so I'm glad you brought that up. I also just wanted to mention, I know Mr. Bullucci talked about COVID, that this Omicron is really running rampant. The numbers are sky-high. I think we, we really need to be very, very careful. I know Virginia Beach General, which was having about 10 or 12 patients with COVID, now has over 90 people in the hospital. They've had to double up on their ICU wards, rooms, and King's Daughter is just full, and Princess Anne is really full. The numbers are really, really staggering because this is so very, very communicative. It's, it's highly transferable, more so than what we've seen in the past. So just want to make sure that we're all cognizant and try to be very careful. Thank you.
Ms. Woodman?
Thank you, and good afternoon, and Happy New Year to my colleagues and those out here in the audience. Certainly good to have you back as well, Mayor Dyer. I'd also like to briefly just echo what Vice Mayor Wilson said as well. I think it's important for us to remember, I think we just need to go back to the basics, you know, and just focus on the testing, vaccinations, and just doing the simple things with masking and distancing. I think that's just really important during, over the holiday season. I know that I've heard reports from families where people were sick, you know, with the gatherings, and so just want to remind everyone, as was mentioned, just go back to the basics and, you know, we'll move through this season or continue to move through this season safely. But I'd also like to really quickly bring your attention back to a announcement that I had back in November for the Ignite Pitch Competition, which is the first pitch competition that's being hosted in Virginia Beach. It's important to me because I know that it's also important to others to really engage our youth, especially our young entrepreneurs, and that's what this event is about. Really important to note is the upcoming January 14th deadline for young adults, entrepreneurs, business owners, to submit, if they're interested, an application to be a part of this event. And the event will actually take place March 12th at the Virginia Beach Convention Center, starting at 8:30. But on the website, you'll see information. You can click on the website and be a part of that competition, or you can also be in the audience, and we'll have limited seating for that event. But just want to make sure those deadlines are out there, January 14th, which is fast approaching, and then March 12th. And we're also going to have some involvement from some community leaders in judging. We'll have Dr. Angela Reddicks there, who will be a judge. We'll also have some business owners who will also be a part of that judging staff as well. And we're going to incorporate some of the local universities like ODU and Norfolk State University, and also the Kimsville Academy, Entrepreneur Academy. So I just wanted to just bring that information back up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Henley?
Well, I think Mr. Tower said his hand up, too. I've talked a lot. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to read a personal letter that affects all of you, and I'll pass a copy out to you. This is addressed to my many friends and neighbors in the once-and-future City Council, District Six. I like that Mr. Tahan's already on to what's the Beach District and District Six. They're one and the same at the moment, and I, but I understand why he's doing it. But this is for them and for everybody throughout Virginia Beach. I'm announcing today that I will not be pursuing reelection to City Council in November of this year. Almost three years ago, when I successfully sought temporary appointment to council, and in the subsequent special election, when I was chosen to continue to serve until December 31 of 2022, I committed to bring a pragmatic, independent, and respectful attitude to representing the residents of our great city. I've worked hard to keep that promise. My tenure on City Council coincided with a period of some turmoil in the city, including a deadly attack on city employees, multiple changes in leadership in the city manager's office, growing recognition that the heart of our resort area is in urgent need of renewal and revitalization, a still festering world health pandemic, and the upending of our system for election of council members. Notwithstanding these difficulties, Virginia Beach residents and their elected representatives, and I might add, city staff, have persevered and achieved a remarkable record of progress on important matters, ranging from protecting our city against stormwater and flooding to achieving a level of fiscal health and stability that would have seemed improbable as recently as the spring of 2020. The reason for my decision is essentially a simple one. I would rather spend my energies for the rest of this year focused on doing my job rather than on campaigning to keep it. I'm announcing my intentions at this time because, one, the voting system and district boundaries that will govern upcoming City Council election in November are now likely in place, and, two, I want potential candidates who may wish to represent District Six, beginning in 2023, to have maximum amount of time and opportunity to consider their plans. I want to thank the mayor, my fellow council members, city manager Dehaney and his team, and the many other members of the city workforce and volunteer corps who've assisted me on so many occasions and in so many ways in serving the public. I am especially grateful to my wife, Winship, for her many personal and professional sacrifices that have enabled me to focus on city matters. And I'll always be grateful to the many donors and campaign workers who stood with Winship and me in 2019. I'm not stepping aside yet. I fully intend to serve the remainder of my term with vigor and dedication. There's much to be done in 2022, and I look forward to meeting those challenges. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Guy, let me just tell you what a pleasure and honor it was to have you among us as part of the team. And, you know, we went through a lot together as a council, as you indicated in your letter, but we were able to come together in a very, I think, magnificent way that demonstrated our resolve and tenacity. And I just want to compliment you because when we think about the COVID, when we think about the challenges that we've had, you know, the fact is, the Beach District was probably able, able to survive better than a lot of places that were out there. We had the highest percentage of hotel occupancy the one year, and from what I understand, there was a banner year this year. And, you know, but once again, I think the seeds that you have planted, as we go forward, are going to, you know, come to fruition. And I just wanted to personally thank you and just say how much I enjoyed working with you, and we'll definitely look forward to a continued friendship and that glass of wine we've been talking about. And the music came at the right time. I'll tell you, it wasn't that amazing. Barbara?
Okay. I have a couple of other issues that are important, but maybe not quite as astounding as that. A couple of things that I just have some questions about that, that I would like to have more discussion at future meetings. The workforce issues. When we approved a good bit of CARES Act money to the Workforce Council, a substantial part of it was that they were doing a study, and I think they had had one part of it that we got some preliminary findings from in the fall, but then the rest of it was supposed to be completed December 15th. I hope we can get the results of that study because I think they were particularly going to be telling us some of the issues that we need to be addressing when we're looking at all of these issues that we're having with workforce and the difficulty of filling positions and so forth. So that, I think, was out, supposed to be out mid-December, so I hope we've got it and we're looking at it, and that we can start to have a little bit more insight into what, what we might be needing to do to, in our own workforce, but as well as in the workforce in the city, things that we, we need to be doing. I know, and I really say again how much I appreciate all the work that the staff did, particularly Parks and Rec and the city manager, to make sure that we were able to continue the after-school program because we certainly found out that childcare is extremely important to people if they're going to be able to stay in the workforce. I think that's just one element, but there are others, and I think we really need to know that, that finding, so if we could have that as well. Then, back on the, the flooding issues, I guess we're going to be getting more and more briefings on, on our referendum projects and what we're doing in flooding, and I'm not sure how that's all going to be coming. But I, I talked about the West Net Creek area in relation to the major rezoning we're going to be having in two weeks, but that particular area is one of our, our referendum projects. And the West Net Creek is so important because it comes right up through the middle of the city, and it goes all the way up to the top of the southern watershed at about Ship's Corner. And all of that area in there is, is very much involved. So I'm, I'm hoping that as, as, as these projects are being designed and, and the staff is going to be working with them, that we're going to be having some ongoing participation with them. And I'm particularly looking at this West Net Creek area because not only is that rezoning, but I've gotten other things with other properties in that area that, that need to come forward, and I, I will be sharing those with you as we go along. Because we also have, as one of our, our major referendum issues, the, the green infrastructure, and I think that might involve some of the shorelines. We'll be, we need to be looking at where the gaps are, that we need to fill in those protected areas. And, and I know we have talked somewhat about the open space program. I keep telling you all along the way, every time it comes up for discussion with appointments, hey, we don't have any money. hey, we don't have any money. I'm hoping now that maybe the meal tax is recovering some, and I hope it does recover, that we'll be able to talk about that program and reinstituting it because I think that's very important. But then that brings me to the larger question of when we're going to start talking about the appointments to the oversight committee, because I think they need to have some input as these designs are being done so that they can keep the public informed. Because I think that's going to be so important as we go forward through all of this process is that we keep the public informed and supportive and so forth. So how we're going forward from this step on with the referendum issues and the overall flooding issues and sea level rise and everything else, I think is going to be critical. I mean, the public has handed us a mandate, and it's a big one. And I hope we really can have ongoing discussions. I don't think we should let a meeting go by that we don't talk about it in some fashion. But I'm particularly, as I said, concerned about those two right now, the green infrastructure. Of course, we've got the marsh terraces out in Back Bay, and then this West Net property. I think these things are going to come in. But the decisions we make are going to be so critical now, and so I hope we're going to really stay on top of all of this.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Moss?
I have a couple items. I'll itemize them versus discussing them in great detail in respect for people's time. But I think all of us would agree that the economy that we saw in November with the five-year forecast is not the economy that any reasonable forecaster sees now for 2022. So I think we need to go back and revisit some of those fundamental assumptions and see how valid they are based on the new predictions of structural inflation to the balance of 2022 on all parts of the economy, the new Federal Reserve Board policy relative that's expected will have an impact on borrowing. So I think there are some fundamental pricing pressures that in November we did not consider, and we need to be understanding that before we approach the budget in March. That's one item. Budget guidance. I know we always say we're going to do it, then we don't. I guess we're not doing it this year either. That's disappointing. But nonetheless, I think if growing the base, I talked about this a little bit, diversifying our economy, then we have to be relooking at how we put our scarce new dollars and where they go, and are we really putting the dollars where we say our priority is? And I think there's a misalignment. If you look, and this is just my anecdotal, just walking through my own neighborhood and looking at what things sold at and what their underlying tax assessment was for the year in which they closed, and it was before 31 December, and they were all in excess of 20%. I know Mr. Jones was on the same street, so I know he knows the homes I'm talking about. That might be anecdotal, but that's right where the national average is. So I think we really are underestimating what we're going to see. And that gets me back to the grocery tax. As we all know, the governor-elect, and it's still a few days to Independence Day on January 15th, it plans to propose eliminating the state 1.5 taxes on food, which mostly, most impacts the people at the lower end of economic scale. So I'd like to know what providing for a local option, I've started to kind of bring that back, working with some of our local delegates, they consider that locality to be given the option to remove the 1-cent tax on food, and maybe that will offset, at the lower end of economic scale, the increased revenues, unexpected increased revenues on real estate and personal property tax. But I think removing the tax on food that people eat every day is a smart fiscal policy. I also would like us, at the appropriate time, because I know we have it now, to get the census tract data. I know that was key in our litigation, but the census tract data has a lot of other socioeconomic data that's in there. It's a rich harvesting thing, obviously corporate, but helps us better understand what's happening at the census tract neighborhood block level of our community. I think we all would be well advised, especially as we go to now representing districts, to understand that economic structure of our community. So I hope that can be made available. And that gets me back now to district voting. I assume the next step is to take the court decision and go and get, walk through the state preclearance. Maybe we're going to talk about that later. Hopefully, we'll, what's the step? And I do think that people are asking for greater information on that, so I know that was our intent. But we, and I was just over talking with the registrar today, and she's still looking for some official approval of what's happening. So that would be, I think we need to resolve that. I did send the two charter amendments, the council member, Ralph, and myself, and I said I'd be looking forward for any comments after the first of the year about people you thought were organizations we would forward that to, or any comments. If you sent me comments, please send them again. I haven't received them. But assuming that I don't hear something, we will just make up our own list and mail that out in the community and begin our engagement right on the timeline that I previously shared relative to those two charter amendments. And I want to ditto your remarks that you made about the flood oversight. I do think that is something that we can't overcommunicate, and it has to be, and I know I've had conversations, we have to execute, and we're going to face pricing pressures on those dollar estimates, for that's the reason I mentioned that. But that is something we cannot overcommunicate with the community, that how we are following through and getting those projects online. So, and lastly, I know we were going to have a committee that was going to receive, Mr. Mayor, the applications, and I don't care who chairs it, the two, but for the oversight for the police. And I hope that, you know, we could conclude that before we adopt the budget. That's my hope, that we should be able to push that, and then we can get to the issue of resourcing the office that takes place. But I think we, and I'm sure you're on top of that, I've just mentioned it because I've had people ask me about it, and I just want to, that certainly probably might be a little bit, well, it means the same priority as the flood oversight, but people are really expecting us to get on with that board and get it trained and get it operational.
Be assured that that is one, yeah.
Those are all the items I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, just wanted to thank everybody and remind council that Terry asked us to fill out this information form. And, yeah, I think it's going to be very important. And given the discussion on the Norfolk rightaway and, you know, the trails and everything, I personally added that as a, hopefully as a discussion point of what we could have. You know, and just saying that, you know, in general, you know, over the number of years, this council has been through some trials and triumphs. And I think it's going to be very important that we go into this year with that spirit of positivity. And once again, I think we're going to be on the threshold of some very, very good things. What I'm seeing out of economic development and companies wanting to come to here, to Virginia Beach, you know, I think we all had the goal that we want people's children to be able to find jobs right here, and I think that's going to be a very good thing. Now, we do have some barriers to success that we, we're going to have to deal with. Number one, the COVID, you know, which we discussed. But the other thing is, too, you know, we're going to be on uncharted waters with, you know, the new system. But I am confident that together, we're going to get through this and get things implemented in the proper way, that then we're going to come together like we have been and do the things that we need to do. I just see right out here a plethora of opportunity that we're going to have to take this great city to the next level. So I just welcome, and I just want to say thank you all for your kind prayers and thoughts over the last month, and I can't tell you how delighted I am to be back in many more ways than you'll think. But I'm just saying that, you know, thank you all, God bless you, and on behalf of me and Trish, wish you all a happy and healthy and prosperous New Year. Okay? All righty, at this point, Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes. And Bobby, we're so glad to have you back, and I want to also personally, you look great. You sound great, you look great, and we know you've been through a lot, but you said you were a quick healer, and look at you. You're right on the goal like you said you'd be, so we're so happy you're here.
Yes, your heads are kind of white that night, Rocky.
Okay, the ordinances to, on the composition of the RAC, anybody have any problem with that? Okay, and then to the sections about the law enforcement officers?
Can we go back on that one? I have a comment on that, but I'll make it at the time. Why, I realize the CCO doesn't want to have a member. One thing we don't have is a member who isn't a vested interest in the resort area itself. We could convert that to a citizen-at-large representative and have someone who's not from the resort area that provides that same insight and perspective but just isn't an organizational rep. I think that has been a shortfall of this board, which I have spoken often about. So just because it's not CCO doesn't mean it couldn't be a citizen-at-large rep, and that's what I would propose. I realize we got this late in the weekend, didn't lend itself a lot of communications, but I think we're missing the opportunity to do that. That's just my comment, but so.
Mr. Tower?
I'm not opposed to deleting them, but I am in favor of making sure there is a citizen for the larger community still on the board. Even the state corporation has a citizen across the state that represents citizens at large.
Mr. Tower?
I'm not going to respond specifically to the comment, other than to say that there are people that are, have been appointed to the RAC and are currently serving on the RAC who are not members of the resort industry, if you will. I'm not saying they don't live in the Beach District, but they are not affiliated with, and as far as I know, have no source of income from the resort area. Just to be clear.
And there have been people in the past who have been on there.
Right.
Who've lived in different parts of the city who were not.
I can just tell you, this board is seen as an insider club, and the larger community at large thinks it doesn't represent the larger community for the larger taxpayer resources it expands.
Anyway, do you want to leave it as is, or do you?
I would leave it as is. If Mr. Moss wants to propose a member who, whatever their qualifications are, I will certainly promise to give it great consideration.
Mr. Bullogi?
Thank you. I'd like to provide some insight here because one of our previous meetings, the composition of the RAC commission did come up, and I'm in agreement with Mr. Moss that it's our responsibility as a council to consider diversification in every aspect on all the boards and commissions. And I think there's a void in broad diversity at RAC that extends to a variety of categories. And while I think Mr. Moss's point is well-made, I think it's up to us as a body to address the concerns that have been raised here, rather than prescribing that it be, I understand the intent of Mr. Moss's suggestion, but I think if we take our responsibility to make sure that the boards are representative of the community at large and the particular areas of interest of each commission, then we can accomplish that through the appointment process, which is what I would recommend if Mr. Moss would be agreeable to it. But Mr. Moss has my commitment, my firm commitment, and strong assertion that it be this body's responsibility to make sure that we take those factors into consideration when we make future appointments to RAC and every other commission.
And with our discussions, and with our discussions, we've been doing, we've been doing that.
Well, we have been doing it with, you know, with great respect, Madam Vice Mayor, but we can do it better.
Mr. Moss requested to be pulled?
We haven't been doing it on RAC. We can do better.
Okay. Okay, B, about the law enforcement officers, any?
I'd like to have that pulled as well.
The designation for City Highways for Golf Course, Golf Cart Operations.
I just have a question, not necessarily about this. I think we can move forward, but I did get an email earlier today from someone from another community that said, how do you get this question about our neighborhood before the public? So if someone can let me know, just so I know how to answer another community, I'd appreciate it.
We'll have that on the set. Number two, the five-year franchise with 27th Atlantic LLC to Oscars. Is everybody okay with that? Number three, the ordinance to authorize a temporary encroachment into a portion of City Rightway known as Kimsville Road, formerly Great Bridge Road, in front of 720 Kimsville Road, to construct and maintain a concrete rightway.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. You know, this cafe franchise agreement, I did, I know the PDRC committee's got that on their agenda. They were going to meet this morning and got delayed because of the weather, pushed it off till tomorrow. I'm just wondering how this public, this public hearing fits in with that committee's work. Are we counting on that committee to have taken action on this before the public hearing?
I have no idea. Is Mr. Tahan here? Is Mr. Tahan, no?
I do not. I believe Emily Archer has some information on that.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
So this is for a routine franchise reapplication. The ones that are coming to PDRC tomorrow are new applications that are different from Oscars.
Different than this one?
Correct.
Okay, I was, I thought this one might be on the agenda.
This is Oscars. I believe it's in your packet. One of our best.
PD.
Most beautiful. If you've seen it, very well done. And they've had it one year, and now they're, they have the opportunity to apply for a five-year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Okay, going back to number three, it's in Kimsville. Any problems?
No opposition here.
Number four, ordinance to donate crushed and reclaimed concrete for the Lynn Haven River now. Any, everybody okay? Number five, the ordinance to authorize longevity and college incentives for the sworn employees of the sheriff's office.
Mr. Moss?
I personally, I'm prepared to go into a robust discussion on this this evening, though I haven't had a chance to study all the responses because of the holiday, the staff didn't have much time to get them to me either. But I think this should be deferred and looked at the concept as when we get the total compensation study, and we should not be getting out ahead of what that study might tell us.
Well, why don't we pull this one?
We, I said, we could pull. I'm just telling you, I'm prepared, but I think my thoughts are, it should be deferred. I don't think it's ready.
All right, is there anybody else who wants it deferred? Or? Vice Mayor, there are speakers signing for this item.
There it goes.
There we go, okay. Number six, ordinance to adjust appropriated funding for the Capitol project, Elbow Road and Centreville, and Princess Anne.
Consent? I don't have any. Take money?
John?
I just want to compliment how nice and how complete that council agenda item was. The math on that and the walkthrough is a template of what makes our job easy. I really do appreciate that.
Okay, 7A, the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. Everybody okay with that? Number B, $64,000 for the Department of Criminal Justice Services for Restrictive Justice Facilitators. Everybody okay with that? C, receiving $333,990 for three grant awards from the Virginia Department of Virtual Sea Management. Everybody okay with that? Number eight, ordinance is to transfer, A, $122,000 from Human Services Operations for the CIP project, 1,00100.
Just record as a no vote for me. I found the answer unsatisfactory.
Transfer $162,347,000 from the 2122 Public Works, and this is for Schilling Point Neighborhood Dredging, District 5, Lynn Haven. Mr. Branch?
Yes.
Everybody else okay?
I just, while I support this, I still want to be able to follow up on the answers that I got to my questions because I am concerned about the difference between what we estimated and the actual cost and the implications of that of future dredging projects and whether or not the funding profiles of our other dredgings to come are sustainable. I think that's still a structural issue that we need to assess.
Mr. Mayor, I, Madam Vice Mayor, while I no longer own the house that's in that Schilling Point Neighborhood Dredging District, I just sold it, I think I'll continue to abstain on it for the time being.
C, $32,260 for vacancy savings in the general fund, and this is to range increases for the deputy and chief deputy position series requested by the Commission of the Revenue and City Treasurer. Mr. Dehaney, did you want to, when this was brought to you, did you want to comment on this?
No.
It was initially brought to staff, and staff initial recommendation that was that we take this up as part of the market salary we take this up as part of the market salary survey and the ongoing budget discussions.
Yeah.
So do we have any speakers on this?
That's the right one.
We just have one speaker who signed up on all items. So do we want to?
Well, let's do it, let's do it during the meeting, then, if we're going to hear from anybody.
Well, it's just one speaker.
I don't know, I think it's broad. I think we need to talk about it as a part of the meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
If we're going to pull it, we're going to pull it.
Okay. All right, then we're going on to planning. The Virginia Beach Racket Club, redevelopment of three single lots, that is Lynn Haven. Okay, anybody else okay?
Say again?
For the racket club?
Oh, that's.
Number two, Sammatt Properties, Taylor Farms Land Company LLC, conditional use from Act I to Act II to conditional I-1 light industrial, and that is in the Beach District, Mr. Tower.
I have no problem.
Okay, number three, Platinum Management on Greenwich Road for 315, 315-unit multifamily residential community, Kempsville.
Objection. Well, I have no objection.
I will have to vote no if we're not going to hear more and get more information than this. I can't support it based on what we have.
John?
Well, I have some questions, which I hoped at the time, how we're going to handle it. If I have to pull to get the answers in public, then I would like to pull it, but if there's a way to get those answers to that longer strategy of consuming industrial property and what that means for a long-term economic development strategy, but I guess under consent, we can get those answers to those questions on how to be beyond consent, but I do want that answer in public.
Say consent for now.
Consent, yes ma'am, but I'm voting no.
Okay, number four, the Monet Freeman Shops LLC, conditional use perpet, Holland Plaza, Rose Hall.
I would, I've heard no objections, and I would recommend for the consent agenda.
Anybody else okay? Traiana Mills, Providence Square Office Park Associates, this is in Kempsville, this is for the Tattoo Parlor.
I moved to put it on the consent agenda.
Everybody else okay? Okay, number six, Kevin and Rasha Mercer, Virginia Beach Holdings for conditional use for assembly use at Kempsville, excuse me, Kempsville Drive, Kempsville. This is really Kempsville today.
Kempsville, yeah.
Everybody else okay? Okay, number seven, John Calcagno of HCD Properties, this is conditional use for assembly use in the Bayside District.
Consent.
Everybody else okay?
I'm voting no, but I would like the answer to my question as to why one neighborhood deserved no amplified sound, but this neighborhood didn't get the same consideration.
Okay. Number eight, Michael Siphon with Virginia Beach Investment for conditional use for mini warehouse, and that is in Centerville.
I don't have any objections to it, haven't received any negative feedback from it.
And then number nine, the resolution to adopt and amend the Comprehensive Plans 2016 regarding stormwater impacts for discretionary land use applications. Did you want to say something, Mr. Mayor?
Um.
Deferring it until March 1st. March, February 1st.
Yeah, we're going to delay. Would it be prudent to send that back to the Planning Commission for?
I don't know why, but I think we need to see what the comments that come from industry are first before we make that decision. So far, the comments I've received, and I've had quite a few calls, I might say, have been on the generality vagueness side, and I've certainly have encouraged them to provide strikeout with specific changes. It appears in the conversations, they're mostly wanting changes to the stormwater management regulation, which we have adopted, rather than the comp plan specifically, and I don't think I'm getting out of order in saying that, I think the staff would agree that's true. So I think we should make it February 1st, they owe comments by a certain date. Mr. DeHaan will have to remind me when that is, I thought it was 14 January, sticks in my brain. They get the comments, they vet them, they get the package. Let's see, is it the regulation that they're concerned with, or that the comp plan is acknowledging that the regulation will be part of the assessment process for the comp plan? And I think we can make that decision on February 1st, and then we can decide if we can act on it, or if in fact the issues are just concerns with the regulatory policy which we've already adopted and is in place. I think we need to see the comments before, I would want to push it as far out as March. On February 1st, if there are real substantive issues, then I'd be the first one to say, okay, let's take the time to adjudicate them. But so far, I have not seen strikeout, here's the language that's there that we don't like, and here's the language that we want. And I think then we can judge the merits of the further extension as needed, and I would be committed to doing that. But I think we should try to stay on schedule of February 1st.
Yeah, Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Holcomb.
Well, obviously, the Planning Commission didn't feel like they had enough time to really dig into this and work with the stakeholders, and I think they could get in at a different level, because eventually, all this stuff is going to go to them. And I personally would prefer for us to send it back to the planning and give them the ample time to look at it like they felt like they should.
We could do that February 1st, so we could send it back to them.
If in fact we think it's needed.
Yeah, I think we need to send it back with what we are thinking should be the thing.
And then, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Holcomb.
That was my question, is what was the hangup with the Planning Commission when they had it? Because I, I don't think.
Their comment was that they, they had just received the ordinance, and they had not had time to look at it and consider it, that was their comment. Is that correct, Mr. DeHaan?
They also wanted to have additional public outreach.
Okay. Well, you know, I think at this point, it could be a fair compromise with the open-mindedness of February 1st as the open, as the initial date, and then make a decision going forward. But, you know, certainly, I think stakeholder input is going to be, you know, very, very much a part of, you know, what we're doing.
Will we have time to get it back on the planning by February 1st? I don't think so.
Probably not.
Wouldn't be able to be advertised.
Not if it has to go back to planning. I think, I think what Ms. Henley stated was that you would prefer to get the comments and give direction, and then, and then send it back to Planning Commission, a festival of the body. Is that correct, Ms. Henley?
Correct, because I think it was our wording in that resolution that we adopted that precipitated this, and I think, you know, we have to look at what we told the public and make sure we're not changing that, so, because I think we're dealing with, with the trust of the public a lot. So I would, I would prefer that we get the input, and then if we're going to make an adjustment, we make that suggestion to them and ask them, so they know exactly what we're asking.
Well, since we're sort of in different places, maybe we should pull it and then see what we come together with and what is put before the body to develop.
I'm happy to pull it, I'm happy to have the discussion.
Okay, we can pull it today, yeah. I love the discussion.
Okay, that's it.
All righty, thank you. Okay, now we're going to call it to order. The roll call, Madam Clerk?
All present, Mayor.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: legal matters, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A 7, and that would be Holloway et al. versus City of Virginia Beach. Next is publicly held property, discussion or conversation of the acquisition of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A and B, Princess Anne District, Princess Anne District. And personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointments, or employees in the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A 1, and that's council appointments, council boards, kit, council, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, and agencies and appointee. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, the vote is open. Consensus, yes. Okay, we are adjourned into, we are recessed into executive.